Counselor, Wednesday, July 1st. Please stand as we're led into invocation by Councilmember Fred Richardson, District One, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Oh God, I have been ages past our hope in years to come. Our shelter from this stormy blast and our eternal home. Dear Lord, Eternally God, we are grateful today for you aligning us to assemble here today. And we pray that you might bless this assembly. Bless everyone that is on the sound of my voice, everyone who gather here today. May whatever they say and do, you may get honor from it. Bless every council member here today. Bless our mayor and all our officials. Bless every citizen and corporate city members of the City of Mobile. Be with us in all our endeavors. God us, forgive us and keep us, and cause your faith to shine among us in the matchless name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call. President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We first would ask that you would turn off or silence all electronic devices before or upon entering the meeting. And the person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the council meeting. When addressing the council, we ask that you clearly state for the record both your name and your address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak. We ask that all of your commentary be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who hasn't given proper notice to the clerk's office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item will not be allowed to address the council. Speakers are granted five minutes to make their presentation. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that all of your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to myself, who serves as chair, and I will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. Very important rule right here, to maintain decorum. There will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. If you notice me using this gavel and utilizing it in order to gain your attention, that's me requesting that you stop your commentary so that you can get further instructions. And so, as long as we follow these rules, we're going to have a very productive meeting, and we're going to listen to all views and all perspectives, and then we will move forward. Now, those are the rules, and thank you for your interest in your municipal government.
Communications from the mayor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good to see everyone here today. I think it's important that I reiterate why we're talking about face coverings. And it's really very simple. It's our primary goal is to reduce the community spread of the COVID-19 virus, which is threatening the life and health of our citizens. It also threatens our healthcare resources. And further, it also, if we are derelict in doing this, it's going to hinder the ability of our businesses to reopen. We have many of our citizens who do not want to engage in the community because of the threat of the COVID virus, because they don't see people having, doing the social distancing. Also, I would like to thank the city council for the actions that they took yesterday. And I'll just remind you that during the meeting yesterday, that we heard not only from the Mobile County Medical Society, but also the Mobile County Health Department and the chief medical officers of the four primary hospitals that we have in the City of Mobile. Now, the safety of our citizens is our number-one priority. Another goal is to help, is going to be to help our citizens comply with this ordinance. You know, I'd rather see our officers hand out face masks and encourage social distancing than issue citations. And I'll say that again. I'd rather see our officers hand out face masks and encourage social distancing rather than issue citations. The ordinance is an important measure to reduce the spread. I know that we have some things that we have to iron out between the ordinance that was introduced yesterday and what the council will ultimately do today. But we all know that the data is clear, that in the last two weeks, that we have seen a rapid rise in the increase of cases. So, one thing I feel sure the council will address, but I just want to make sure that we do cover it, is what will be the effective date, you know, based on your actions? We need to make sure that we touch on that. So, that concludes my opening remarks. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Adoption of the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
We probably moved in second. Any discussion? Absentee in discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Heather Hardesty.
Thank you all so much for being here. On the issue of the COVID-19, first and foremost, the N-95 mask.
Give your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Heather Hardesty, 8050 Calioca Road, Saraland. The N-95 mask.
Can I give you her address again?
Sure. Yeah, 8050 Calioca Road, Saraland. I wrote it outside if you need it.
Yes, ma'am.
The N-95 masks, as I was saying, they filter out greater than three microns. Okay? The coronavirus is less than one micron. So, clearly, the masks aren't working. I think, you know, we have to look around. It looks kind of like a circus to me. I mean, I don't want any outbreaks. I think we're all on the same page with that. But statistically, Alabama has less than 1,000 deaths. The coronaviruses, I think, are showing up in all of these tests because they, that's what they do. They don't filter out just for the coronavirus 19, or COVID-19. Even dogs have all sorts of coronaviruses. And I just think that it's, I think that it's first and foremost unconstitutional that we would have to be required to wear these masks. And the hoax, actually, this hoax that I'm talking about, and it really is a hoax, it began the very day that unsubstantiated claims of impeachment were ended that very day. So, I mean, what are we really doing here? What are we witnessing? In 2018, there were 1.5.
I'm sorry, did you say what now? I want to make sure, certain that I'm hearing all that you're saying. It began what?
The hoax began the very day that the unsubstantiated claims of impeachment against our president ended. So, what we're witnessing is the dying breath of the enemies of humanity. 1.5 million people in 2018 died of pneumonia. And, I'm sorry, not pneumonia, another lung death. Anyway, no masks, no 24/7 coverage by MSM, no quarantine. So, you know, what's really going on here? I believe that this is a battle of good and evil. I hope that you join me on the right side of history. May God bless America. Oh, and the other thing, OSHA standards for working conditions require more than 19.5% room air of oxygen. When you put the mask on, they're reduced to around 17. Even OSHA claims that it's not an appropriate oxygen level. And people are driving around with masks on. I think that that's the real problem here, and I encourage you to make the right decision. Thank you so much.
Let me ask you a question. You live in Saraland?
I do.
Has the Saraland council passed an ordinance relative to face masks?
No.
Do you work in Mobile?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I'm just trying to make, I'm trying to understand.
And I shop here.
That's great, that's great. We appreciate you coming down.
Sure, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Sabrina Mas.
Yes, well, hey, come on down.
How are you guys doing today? Thank you for letting me address you guys today.
If you could give us your name and address for the.
I'm short, I'm no, I'm short. Sorry. Thank you. Sabrina Mas, 1050 Belvedere Circle West, Mobile, Alabama 36606. And I would like to start out by saying, for every right, there is a, for every right there is a corresponding duty. Our right to be free speech, our right to free speech carries with it a duty not to incite violence or harm others. Those who choose not to wear a face mask during this pandemic risk harming.
Oh, that's nasty.
Excuse me. Those who choose not to wear a face mask during this pandemic risk harming others because no one can be certain that they are virus-free, even if they have been tested. I have a right to express my opinion in this letter. I also have a duty not to harm others. Am I virus-free? I have no idea. That's why I will wear a mask. "Give me liberty or give me death" was a great slogan for rallying partisans to charge British muskets in 1776. It's a terrible public health philosophy in the 2020 coronavirus pandemic. State governors, city council members, mayors, and I can't speak so much for the president at this moment, they are encouraging or ordering citizens for us to wear a mask, are not for liberty thieving, they are not liberty-thieving tyrants. They have your life and the public interest in the hand and lawful powers to enforce their orders. And I would like to say, as a nurse, for many, many years, yesterday, I sat in on the meeting, and I was very saddened by how the medical personnel were talked to. It was degrading. And another thing, someone, one of the ladies said that the numbers from the medical personnel, the funeral directors or owners were making up these numbers for money. First of all, I'm going to just say, we make good money anyway. And I would like to know who is coming up with this theory that they're just making up numbers that people are dying? I tell you what, I have, I have had many patients in my history to be put on ventilators. It is a painful process. If anyone could see the pictures of how that procedure is done, perhaps you can look it up, Google it, Google ventilators and how you intubate, and I bet you will wear that mask. And I will say this, as a medical person, I stand with my medical community. Do you think it's easy going into a job, trying to save people, and possibly they will die? I would say this, it's not like you going and you're a banker, you're a medical personnel. When you lose a patient, you take that home with you for life. When you check out of that hospital setting or whatever realm you're working on in the medical field, you take those things home with you. It's not easy. And I will say this, yes, we make good money, but we earn that money because nursing school, medical school is hard. Eighty people started in my graduating class in Texas, only 17 graduated. It is not hard, it's intense. It's not anything easy. So, I have a problem with what happened yesterday, addressing the professionals coming to educate, but yet people were saying these negative things to them in their presence. That was disrespectful. That hurt me, and it bothers me. So, my thing is, so, all these people that are going against the medical professions, do you not ever need a doctor or a nurse? And if so, those same people that are putting this falsification of they're making up these numbers, so what will happen when, what if you have to go to the hospital and see those same doctors and nurses that you just spoke negative about? They are not here to hurt. We're here to help. We're here to help. I take that very personal, because I know as a nurse, matter of fact, I was so dedicated to my nursing that my husband used to tell me, "Why are you always putting all these hours and times in with your patients?" It's because it's the compassion inside of your heart. And as far as wearing the mask, as far as the not getting the oxygen, lack of oxygen, that's false. Do you know how many hours that nurses and doctors work? Eighteen hours? Is that my time?
One more.
Excuse me. Eighteen hours, 16, 18 hours a day, wearing these masks. I never passed out from wearing a mask. So, I don't know where they're getting this information. If they have this substantial information, please provide me, because I think I'm an educated person. I do my own research. I don't go on social media to find my information. I go to the legitimate medical websites that can be studied and can be proven. And Constitution, I think everybody here that knows me, know I stand for the Constitution, my rights, all the time. Your constitutional rights are not being violated. If you are doing harm to others, then you lose your constitutional rights. And as far as grandkids, someone talked about that. I have grandkids, they wear their masks. They're not afraid, they're not paranoid. You know why? Because they see me and my family practicing wearing the mask. They're going to emulate what they see others doing. So, someone might be putting fear in these children. So, my thing is, and Mayor Stimson, I agree with the mask ordinance. Please pass it.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mas.
Reggie Hill.
Good afternoon, Mr. Hill.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Members of the council, Mayor Stimson, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good afternoon. Reggie Hill, 1007 sinistry. I rise today in opposition of the ordinance, not in opposition of the idea, but in opposition of the ordinance, and I'm going to explain what I mean by that. I want us to remember as a people that the power of life and death reside in the tongue. So, we have the ability to speak over these things. The power of life and death reside in the tongue. We have the ability to speak over these things. God has given us the ability to speak health and declare that over our lives, and that is something that we have to have faith enough to express. And if we don't have that, that can be a challenge. Let me explain something why I say that. I sit on the board of directors for Dearborn YMCA. Now, within that board, I express my disdain about wearing the mask in a mandatory fashion within the building. However, the majority of the board decided that, hey, we need to do that. And so, I have to respect the majority of the board if that's what I want to participate in. Just yesterday, I completed training for pole working, and so that means I'll be a registration clerk. When I walked into the training, I didn't have my mask on. But when probate judge Davis said that it was a requirement to be there, and this was something that I wanted to participate in, that's what I did. However, there is no federal mandate that says we have to wear one in public. There is nothing federal. So, anytime that I'm in the public as a citizen, I should be able to have the discretion on myself to choose to do that or not. We have these exemptions that are in the ordinance that are talking about this idea of if you're in a park, you don't have to wear this face covering. Then we have this idea, after we saw an incident last week where people were congregated in a parking lot, that now we're going to enforce, however, that you have this in a parking lot? So, it's certain demographics in the city that are still not in this concept of what I believe we should each be wanting to reach with this ordinance. There is not a vaccine. But yet, we see these ideas of where we're going to invest money into testing. We found that testing is good for the moment that is taken, the moment that is taken. Yesterday, we heard the top official in the medical field in Mobile County express it was disrespectful to not have a mask on. I feel it's disrespectful when we speak for hours for medical professionals, and not one of them can provide the specific data for our county, for this city. That's the piece that I don't get. We can tell everything across the nation, but we can't express what's happening right here? So, the same way, we don't have any concrete direction from the federal government, we don't have it locally. So, how is it that we can demand these things on people, and we don't have any concrete instructions? So, I appreciate the people who have respect for the medical profession. I have people in my family who are in the medical profession, I respect them as well. But I, myself, worship a higher power that has the final say-so on anything and all things, and you can speak to those things. See, this is metaphorical as well. I didn't want to get this deep, but I think it's necessary. It's metaphorical as well. We're covering up this idea for us to be able to speak to these things, for us to be able to touch and agree, and to be able to come together and send this thing back to the pit of hell where it came from. This is what's missing here. I hear all the time from the administration, "One more bill." I hear all the time from the council, "This is the hardest work in, we'll put this council up against anybody." I don't have any disdain against that. But when we don't have the actions that reflect it, that's when there becomes an issue. So, I think the priority is out of place, and it should not be passed. And I also believe that if it has to be passed, because you know that's what the supermajority will allow you to do, if you have the five votes, we need to amend it so that there will be an exception for those people who feel this interferes with their faith. I will not be suppressed by the ideas of people in their, let me put it like this. I've researched the Tuskegee experiment very in-depth, and this has a lot of resemblance to that same thing, only this time, it's not anything in a local community with just one group of people. Now, the statistics also show that that same group of people actually are most prone to catching this experiment that I will call. So, the idea that we're going to infringe on the rights when there is no federal mandate, and we don't have specific directions and instructions from the people who are represented here, that doesn't warrant us to adopt something, even if the mayor feels that we won't even be able to enforce it properly. We have all these reasons why we should not proceed for, and I hope that you will consider that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Hi. Wendy LaCoast Bedsole, 5405 Colonial Oaks Drive North, Mobile 36618. To the mayor, the city council members, and the citizens of Mobile, I'm standing today in support of the ordinance presented by our mayor. Critical questions and concerns were raised yesterday from citizens and from you. It was incredible to watch, quite honestly. Thank you all, everybody, for your careful responses to this issue. Having been present yesterday, I feel like I could make a case for our elected officials truly caring about your constituents. The physicians in Mobile County, along with the health department, stood here yesterday during a pandemic. They provided facts, and they asked for temporary ordinance that may very well save lives. In full disclosure, I am the executive director of the Medical Society of Mobile County. However, I do not have a medical degree. I have a BA in English from the University of South Alabama. But I do work for and with physicians. Yesterday, Mrs. Gregory, who is my councilperson, asked of the physicians who were here if she and fellow council members who were seated six feet apart were okay to not have on masks during this council meeting. It was an excellent question, and it caused me to pause. I immediately thought of my workplace and my employees. I thought, okay, we can be in separate offices, six feet away, we can wear a scarf or a bandana or a mask. But then I stopped, and I literally thought about my employer. I thought, my bosses are doctors. Do they have the same liberty and luxury, or even the option, to remain six feet away from their patients? The nearly 62,000 healthcare workers in Mobile and the surrounding areas, are they able to do their job from six feet away? Nurses, physician assistants, nurse practitioners, my aunt who helps diagnose skin cancer, my brother-in-law, who right now is a nurse in training and volunteer for the COVID unit? What about the specialist that treated my youngest son's RSV and his asthma? The ER doctor that sewed up my oldest son's jagged foot? The nurse techs that came to my daughter's room and checked on her? Those who have operated and cared for me, who brought meals to my hospital room and asked me how I was doing? What about the hospitalists who did not even know my family, but walked into the room and cared for us as if they did? And the staff members at the nursing home on Dolphin Street who loved and watched over my mother-in-law and stepfather-in-law? Lastly, of my examples, the hospital ER personnel who ushered my mother, brother, and I into a side room after my father's passing. I can assure you that when my dad's cardiologist knelt down and took my mother's hands to bring comfort, he did not have the option in that moment of social distancing. Because while COVID-19 right now is central on our sites, guess what? Other illnesses and diagnoses haven't taken a break. Heart disease continues, Lyme disease and lupus, Parkinson's, pediatric cancer, diabetes, obesity, macular degeneration, vascular issues, infertility, I could keep going. What about those people that provide care for each patient in our city and potential patients? Can we afford our healthcare workers, not just physicians, but all healthcare workers and leaders, to be out sick with the coronavirus? Now, consider the caretakers of your family members, your spouses, your parents, your children's grandparents. We mentioned being at war against an invisible foe. In Mobile alone, we are watching healthcare employees literally walk into the front lines of a war against a virus. And there is a chance that a face covering might help those people stay alive, and then they can help the rest of us to stay alive? In the words of Mr. Richardson yesterday, "Let's rock and roll." That's the answer to, in my opinion. So, ultimately, this.
One moment, yes, ma'am.
Ultimately, this, my plea to you is, please pass this ordinance, even for 30 days, because what we do know is that the citizens of Mobile County wearing a face covering for the next month will not end in a death. Regardless of the debate, the two and the four sides, it will not kill not one person. If nothing else, pass it being mindful of those who do not get the luxury of steady, uninterrupted, six-feet social distancing at their workplace, so they can continue to live and take care of my family, yours, and your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Pam Maloney. I'm 3700 Cottage Hill Road. I come to you, mayor and councilman, with all due respect, that to present my idea that this is the most tyrannical ordinance that you could pass. You do not have the right to come against our constitutional rights. I'm a registered nurse of 34 years. I graduated in 1984, when AIDS epidemic hit. I had AIDS stuff spit up in my face. I understand that N-95 is effective against some of it, what this lady was trying to say, but it doesn't filter out a virus. And I see you and other people wearing them down here on your chin. I like to call them face-chin guards, because more people are letting them slide to their chin. And guess what? The CDC announced and said at the beginning, "Oh, you are ridiculous if you wear a face mask, because you're touching your face." And now, all of a sudden, you're going to make criminals out of law-abiding citizens if you don't wear a mask. Well, let me just reassure you, all of you. We will remember, I represent reopen Alabama, reopen Mobile, and the cross church of Mobile, Alabama. I will not be silenced. You've not seen anything yet, because I'm sick of the tyranny. I do agree that if somebody wants to stay home, they want to cover up, get it all on, put all it on. But you know the N-95, new one every day. When I took care of the AIDS epidemic, when I took care of, my brother died. He died of the swine flu. 12,000 people were dropping dead. I had the swine flu. My brother died at 39 years old and died in ICU. I'm a critical care RN, 34 years, at the bedside. With all due respect to Dr. Kalanis and these medical experts, ha, I laugh, because they're not really over the patient over the bedside. Any ICU nurse will tell you, you change a mask every time you're going in and out. If the city is going to pay and provide, N-95's, which still are not effective, you need a N-95 and a mask, you need to tell people to quit wearing them on their chin, because otherwise, it's ineffective. And you're introducing bacteria. If I touch this podium where everybody's touching, and I notice she don't have her mask on, but everywhere, if I touch this thing, then I touch my mask, I'm putting it all in my face. I'm shoving it up my nose. I stand. I stand for reasonable people. As a registered nurse, I'm proud to have served my community for many years. I love people. I've been at the bedside, I've had hepatitis A, B, and C spit in my face, and like that gentleman said, I also believe life and death and the power of the tongue. How can we say we are a righteous nation that stands up for the Bill of Rights and our Constitution? It should be everybody's choice. My sister, and I'll speak of mint for her, because they're very bashful, she has severe asthma, bronchitis, and pneumonia-type stuff. But you know what? When she don't feel good, she stays home. She's on all kinds of preventive antibiotic, not antibiotics, but she's on stuff to boost her immunity. But she gets made fun of if she don't have a mask on. So you're going to cause a bunch of mess. Because I'm still not going to wear a mask. If I have to keep paying a fine, I'm not going to pay it. I'm going to get the Liberty Council to represent me, and I'm coming against the city. I'm going to remember Richardson, I'm going to remember Davis, I'm going to remember Beth, Beth Rich, I'm going to remember you. And I'm not going to forget, I'm going to actively, actively protest. So you may not think my voice is very loud, but I have people behind me. I have a church, I have a community. And I do think we have rights, and that's the biggest thing. You know, we've got the schools closed for safety, yet the 0.001 child has died. Do you close school for pneumonia? Do you close school for all these other infections that fly by? And what about when the swine flu comes back? I heard that on the news yesterday. It may come back. So we're going to throw a mask on everybody, shut everybody up again. I'm not doing it, and I'm going to lead a revolution. A revolution for constitutional rights. I'm sick of it, I'm tired of not having our voices heard. I want to be reasonable. I am a reasonable, educated, registered nurse. My son's a nurse practitioner. Nurses are being laid off. They're being followed because it's such a pandemic, and we don't want to overwork our hospitals. I call poppycock on that, okay? I think that's crap. People are being laid off, they don't have enough jobs, no more, in Texas, no more elective surgeries right now. The more you test, guess what? The cases are going up. Let's test everything. A rock, a tree, your test numbers, oh, we got more cases. But the death rate is at an all-time low. It's low, and it's dropping lower. But let's keep testing everybody. Let's got to have any type procedure. Thank you.
That's your time.
That's my time?
That's your time.
I appreciate the opportunity, because this is America, and God bless America.
We appreciate you coming out. Now, the very last rule that I articulated was no undue applause. And so, no, the very last rule that I articulated was no applause. No ma'am, hold it, hold it. No, they heard me. They heard me. And, no ma'am, well, they're going to hear me through this mask. I'm sorry, I wasn't directing that to you. I'm directing it to those who applaud it. That's fine, I'm sorry, maybe next time. And I also want, you called out Beth and Joel, and there was one more council member that you, Fred Richardson, please remember Levon Charles Manzi. I just want to make sure you didn't, hold it, hold it, ma'am, I listen to you, it's my time. Yes, ma'am. Levon Charles Manzi. Ma'am, I see it quick.
Rhonda Crabtree?
Excuse me, sir. Okay, that's fine, if you give us just a while, you can come right on up.
My name is Mary Crabtree, and I'm the sister that my sister just spoke of. And I do have rheumatoid arthritis, and I do take a lot of-
Can you give us your address, please?
My address, 3700 Cottage Hill Road. And I do take a lot of medications. And when I'm sick, I stay home. But when I'm out and about, and I can't breathe because of this, even the paper-thin mask, I get made fun of, I've been called a criminal, and I think it is against our constitutional right if I want to go out and not wear a mask. If I'm going to go out and not wear a mask, it's not going to kill anyone. Like my sister said, I don't want to repeat what she said, but I believe that safety is of the Lord. I walk and I follow after the statutes of my Lord, Jesus Christ. And guess what? Life and death are in the power of the tongue. And I speak life everywhere I go. I have a ministry, I feed homeless people, I take care of underprivileged children. And I don't wear a mask, they don't wear a mask, and I plead with you, sir, not to pass this law.
Let me ask you, you say your address is what now?
I live, I live in the country, but my address where I do ministry is 3700-
I need to know what your mailing address is, because the address you just referenced me is a church.
That's my church. That's where I live most of the time.
No, you don't live in the church now?
No, I don't live there, but I do minister there, and I live in Grand Bay Wilmer Road-
What is your mailing address?
I just said it. Grand Bay Wilmer Road, 5300.
Which is outside, isn't it outside the city limits?
But I work inside the city limits, I got a church inside the city limits.
All I'm saying, you're doing a lot of referencing about the church, life and death and the power of the tongue. You appear to be a very religious person.
Yes, I am. No, I'm a Christian.
Great, I am too.
I'm not religious.
Well, I am too.
I'm a Christian.
We asked you to give your, hold one second, Mr. Williams. We asked you to give your address, and you gave us a false address, that's not your address.
I wasn't told that I had to give my address, I was told to give an address. So the address that I do all my ministry at is that address I just give you.
Yes, ma'am. Please, please finish your presentation.
Okay, well, thank you. But anyway, this is my body, okay? It's my choice. I'm not going to wear a mask. And I have people backing me, I'm not wearing a mask, it's unconstitutional. I stand on the Constitution. This is tyranny. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And we're going to ask if you would to please give us, we don't want to know where you go and worship, because my address is 711 Ever Avenue, that's the case. We want to know where you reside, if you don't mind.
Athena McDonough, 113 Van Nuys Road, Mobile, Alabama.
Thank you.
And I'm here to say that I'm tired of the mask-wearing, and I want all that to stop, and to prevent it at offices, not to be helping people like me or my family to wear a mask in a state of, in Mobile, Alabama. Because I think it's ridiculous, and it's unconstitutional for me to wear a mask. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Williams?
I think it may be a good time for me to clarify my position. I don't think that people have a right to go into a privately-owned business who believes that masks should be worn in their business without a mask on, all right? I don't know if I can say that differently. But if you choose not to wear a mask, and the business owner says you have to wear a mask to come in my business, then I think the city ought to back them. Before the city goes anywhere in open public place, we ought to protect those who choose to protect themselves and their vendors, or, excuse me, and their customers, their patrons. I'm not against masks. I do think they are marginally effective. I had a lot of phone calls last night, you know, "Thank you for standing up for not having to wear a mask." I do think you need to wear a mask. I just simply don't think that an ordinance is going to make people wear them. I think they're going to be ineffective, and this ordinance will be unenforceable. But if Fresh Market, Costco, the Shell Station at the corner, or whatever drugstore or private business that's in our city wants to say that you must wear a mask to come in this private business, or the mayor says that you must wear a mask to come on this government property, then I think they're well within their rights. And if we want to respect others' rights, and we want our rights respected, then we must, we must do that in a mutual way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Matthew Crabtree?
Mr. Crabtree? Do you mind telling us your name and address and your age, please?
My name is Matthew Crabtree, and I'm from, and I'm from 7, I mean, 3700 Cottage Hill Road. And I believe that, that, that I want to go to school, and that these people need to stop and open up these schools, and that, that, that this is, this is tyranny. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate you coming down, Mr. Crabtree.
Okay, ma'am. One more.
Hey, I protest giving my name and my address on here, because I don't want the pinko commies that let Antifa in here. I can't call people pinko commies.
No, sir, if you can.
I can?
No, sir, no, 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 that's not what I'm saying. Everybody goes by the same rules. Which is give your name and give your address.
Well, I'm not giving my name, because I don't want the people that let Antifa in my back door to start trouble on Water Street to know my address.
Well, you're not going to be able to move forward. You do the same. Appreciate your time.
Oh, I'm definitely missing that.
That's all the speakers.
Mr. President, this is an unusual setting, and I would ask that if someone maybe didn't know the rules of national security-
I don't have one issue. Is there someone here that would like to-
Is there an address and speak? Yes, sir.
I actually did sign up earlier, I gave the-
Well, come on down.
Yes, sir. My name is Bruce Sherman, 1323 Berry Drive, Mobile, 36608. I know a lot of these arguments are emotional, I deal more in facts. First off, an observation. The, in the beginning of this, everybody, you know, the professionals came out, said 2.2 million possible dead. If we don't do this, we need to act now, lock everything down. And then they came out and kept reducing those numbers the whole way down. But let's, let me get my glasses and let's get into some facts. First off, we know that those with compromised immune systems are the most vulnerable, yet some states mandated that their nursing homes take in COVID, COVID-positive seniors. Everybody panicked, started wearing masks and gloves. Now CDC says COVID-19 not caught easily from services, which is reported on several news outlets, including CBS and such. According to the CDC website, most people have mild cases and can recover at home without medical care. The original projected deaths we just talked about came from Neil Ferguson at Imperial College London. That was at 2.2 million, calling for 5% mortality rate. Now, this is the same man that gave us altogether wrong projections for the bird flu, swine flu, hand and mouth disease. Caitlin Rivers, an epidemiologist at Johns Hopkins Center of Health Security, stated that the current best estimates for the infection fatality risk are between 0.5 and 1%. Now, this number, by the way, is closer to what John Ioannidis has said from the beginning, contrary to Anthony Fauci and the WHO. On March 5th, vaccine expert Paul A. Offit, who holds Amarius R. Hildman Chair of Vaccinology at the University of Pennsylvania, told factcheck.org that he believed the World Health Organization's 3.4% fatality rate figure was too high, suggesting it's well below 1%. He said also, "We're more the victim of fear than the virus," Offit said, adding that "we're witnessing wild overreaction to the disease." The British Medical Journal, 2015, "The Risk of Contracting Influenza-Like Illness If a Cloth Mask Is Used Versus No Mask At All." "Contaminated masks and mask-holding moisture and pathogen retention can increase the risk of infection," which is what the young lady was talking about earlier. A 2016 study in the Journal of Exposure Science and Environmental Epidemiology found 97% of particles penetrated cloth masks, and 44% of particles penetrated medical masks. They reported that cloth masks are only marginally beneficial in protecting individuals from particles less than 2.5 micrometers. They also referenced the Journal of Medicine, "The Size of Coronavirus Particles Vary Between .06 Micrometers and .14 Micrometers." There is zero scientific evidence that wearing a mask, especially for more extended periods, protect us. However, several studies have found significant problems with wearing one. Side effects range from headache to increased airway resistance, carbon dioxide accumulation, hypoxia, and other severe complications. It was reported by NPR on May 21st, 2020, that CDC has acknowledged that it's mixing results of two different kinds of tests in the agency's tally of testing for the coronavirus, raising concerns among scientists that it can be created, excuse me, creating an inaccurate picture of the state of the pandemic in the U.S. Dr. Donald Yeeley, a UPMC doctor, said the number of people hospitalized with COVID within UPMC is the lowest in many weeks, and people who test positive aren't getting sick. Did you notice in the beginning that they were reporting the number of deaths? After they said 2.2 million may die, they started reporting deaths, this many dead, this many dead. Now, we're focusing on cases, not deaths. Mainstream media puts up number of cases. Cases mean nothing. You test more, you will get more positives, period. That should be common sense. If you look at the stats, the actual data coming from the experts everybody says to listen to, the CDC, Fauci, WHO, all of them, the charts show it. The cases are going up, the deaths are going down. Even Dr. Deborah Birx has stated on May 9th, article in Washington Post, as well as Business Insider, that she believes the death toll could be overinflated by CDC by as much as 25%, and there was nothing from CDC she could trust. You can look everything up that I'm saying. What is a COVID case, according to CDC website? A COVID-19 case includes confirmed and probable cases and deaths. Now, this change was made to reflect an interim COVID-19 position, a statement issued by the Council of State and Territory Epidemiologist on April 5th, 2020. The position statement included case definition and made COVID, I'm sorry, is that my time?
Thank you.
Can I state one more thing?
No, sir.
You can leave your paperwork if you'd like.
We appreciate it.
You can leave your paperwork, and we can get copies and read it.
Absolutely, where do I leave it?
The clerk. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
City Council, Mayor, thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else here that would like to offer any commentary? No, ma'am.
I see, is that Dr. Ashold?
It could. Dr. Ashold, anything you'd like to offer?
Come on down, Dr. Ashold.
Thank you, sir. I just want to thank everybody for having this discussion. This is an important health issue.
Dr. Ashold, do you mind giving us your name and your-
I'm Bert Ashold, K-I-C-H-O-L-D, 165 South Georgia Avenue, Mobile, Alabama.
Thank you.
So I want to thank everybody for having this discussion. Health affects all of us. One of the questions we had about jurisdiction inside a building, fire code applies inside a building, can't block the fire exits, fire marshal goes in on a regular basis. Health and safety prevails over everything. And I really think it's important, and we know the data on places, is that we don't have absolute cure or proof of it. If anything, we've got to do whatever we can do to help eliminate or decrease the spread of this virus for a period of time.
Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm having trouble hearing you because the microphone is headed that direction, if you can-
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Dr. Ashold, if you could start at the very beginning, and to speak there in the mic, please.
I'm sorry about that. The audio in this building is-
No, that's fine. I think it's very important that we have, health affects all of us, and I completely understand and appreciate the discussion that has gone on in the presence of this chamber. If we have even a small opportunity to improve the health and well-being of individuals, I think we are obligated for a period of time to take it as we look at the data the COVID-19 is spreading. It may not impact Bert, or it may not impact you individually, but what we do as citizens does impact other people. The idea of does a city code apply within buildings is look at the fire code. You cannot block a fire exit. It's a life and health and safety issue, and that's what I'm asking as we go along. And it's, you have to have fire extinguishers in a commercial building. And so they look at- building. And so, they look at life and safety issues. So, I thank everybody for this debate. I hope that the city council will, uh, have an opportunity to move this forward and help protect the people in our community. And it really is, wearing a mask is a sign of respect to somebody else. And it's like clothing. It is a clothing item, but you have to wear clothes when you're outside, uh, in the city of Mobile. And I think that is probably a city ordinance somewhere, although very old. Uh, you can't walk down the street without clothes on in the city of Mobile. So, thank you very much, and God bless.
Dr. Ishold?
Thank you.
Ms. Grant? Um, one of the things when I talk to citizens that are opposed to, um, being, um, mandated to wear when they're out in public and can't keep the six-foot, you know, social distancing, um, I try to, um, talk to them about our smoking ordinance that was also quite laborious to get, uh, attached as a city code for no smoking, especially in restaurants and in public buildings. And I see it as the same because it's something that you take in and then you let go, and that secondhand smoke. So, it's almost like this is a secondhand issue. You're keeping the problem to yourself, so to speak, and not omitting those, the spitting, the whatever, the particles that might have the virus in them. Do you see that as the same, too?
Well, I think they're not exactly the same science. We have, uh, you know, smoking is, will be a permanent ordinance, and I hope the city will sit down and make this a temporary, uh, as we...
Oh, no, I understand that, yeah.
Watch, watch the data, because I think it's very important that we look at data, and we have not come to this council until this point in time, as we see the total cases are going. Was this going to have a seasonal variation? Was this going to be like the seasonal flu? Was this going to be like SARS? Was this going to be like MERS? Uh, was it going to be like some of the other coronaviruses? It is not behaving like that, and that's why we need to go the next step. But it's very similar in the process that we had with the, the smoking ordinance, is looking at health and safety of individuals and the rights of some individuals in the presence of other individuals.
Right.
And I think that's a very good analogy, uh, to show that we're all in this, uh, life together, and how we treat and respect each other, and how we help prevent the spread of disease that could negatively impact mostly at this point in time our older population. But they're still human beings, and they're still part of our community. And the virus could change. It could start affecting younger people. Uh, and I think we just need to do as much as we can to control it. And I thank this organization and the community for participating in this process.
Yeah. I, I know we don't have all the necessarily, um, statistics that we had on secondhand smoke and the lung diseases it caused, but we do know that cross-contamination of, this is a big problem for the community if you can't slow it down. And so, therefore, the mask just prevents this from crossing over and getting into somebody who either by age has issues and/or someone who is already having underlying, regardless of their age.
Yes, I agree.
But everyone has to then wear the mask.
Right. And again, to, to Mr. Williams, is surfaces have been looked at. They are a potential source, but the, the spread of this disease is really in the air matters going from one person to another person. And we should maximize the protection in all capacities. And we can all agree to disagree on certain issues, but health is one thing I think is universal to everyone.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Williams? I just, um, if you go back and look at the film yesterday, I talked about air. I talked about the importance of air.
You did. You did.
I talked about the importance of when you share space, uh, that, that everybody ought to wear the mask.
Correct.
And that every doctor coming up and going into the same space was a potential spread of this very disease that we're talking about. Um, so I stand on those words yesterday. They're absolutely factual, and, uh, I'm not going to debate the degree of which anything stays on any surface or in any space, but we all can agree that it does to some degree, and that wearing a mask is a good thing. But, but the fact is that even the professionals and the politicians that are putting this ordinance in place are not practicing what they preach. And if we can't do it, then how can we expect a citizenry to do so? Well, something that we wouldn't do ourselves. That's all. Thank you.
I, I agree. Wish everybody would follow all the rules.
Uh, Mr. President?
Uh, Ms. Graydon?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Ishold, thanks for coming back today. Um, second day in a row.
Yes, ma'am.
For this. Uh, we keep hearing criticism of the CDC, and if you're like me and everybody else, you're probably on Facebook, and you're seeing all kinds of articles, all kinds of dot-coms, and experts who have varying opinions about pretty much everything, uh, but in this case, you know, COVID and wearing masks and that sort of thing. We got an email from Dr. Kulianos, who talked about the vetting process and how things continually change because this virus continually changes, and we haven't necessarily had the same process, um, with this as we have with others. And so, things change continually. I wonder, though, if you could speak to all of the changes that we keep hearing about through the CDC. One day it's one thing, and next week it seems to be something else. How, how is that happening?
Well, the CDC is, again, looking at scientific information. And the scientific invasions coming in, the first thing that we talked about was face covering came up at the level, is that we did not have adequate PPEs. So, wearing a mask was one of the factors that was discussed early on, but because of the lack of PPE, personal professionally, personal protective equipment, uh, the face covering issue was kind of left silent. There was some debate about it, uh, and then as we kind of learned more, this is a process of learning how this virus behaves. This is now 104 days that this virus has been in Mobile, Alabama. Uh, we've learned a lot, and I think the CDC has learned a lot. And as we use current information and newer information and move the process forward, we make adjustments based on the data and the cases. I think there were a lot of people who were very optimistic as behaved like seasonal flu, and as the summer months got here, but we're getting ready to celebrate the Fourth of July. Uh, and so, that, I think, is the, we don't know everything there is to know about COVID-19. And I think it's, uh, actually, there's some places that are seeing it. We don't know if you have it this year, or you will have, like, with measles, lifelong immunity, or is it going to be like having the flu, and the next time, next year, you will have to get ready for it again. We just don't know. So, therefore, it's time to try to err on caution, as we were a little more relaxed. We're realizing that we need to kind of pull the rope in just a little bit more, not like when we quote, "Shut everything down" because we had zero data then. And we could not just trust the information from China and then Indian, excuse me, Italian information was not really good, and we were not really current. So, that was the idea to really stop. This is an idea, we kind of let things get a little further ahead, and we kind of need to pull in just a little bit for a period of time. Look at the data, look at the transmission rates, look at our hospital utilization rate. And if we're going to err, I think as well, of health and well-being, it's better to pull a child out of the water who you're not sure can swim than it is to have an adverse impact. And the same thing goes with this, is again, I would suggest that we pass something for 30 days with an option to renew it for another 30 days if the disease is still going. But yes, it'll be an inconvenience, and it'll be a reminder to people. I don't want to see anybody go to jail. I like what the mayor suggested, maybe passing out masks to, uh, to people. We're doing that in public health. We go to restaurants, and we find places that are not wearing the mask with their employees. We're giving them a mask. We're teaching them. We're educating them. I don't think anybody here wants to hurt another human being. And if this can help save or help end the spread, the transmission, then that's what we need to do, because nobody likes, you know, America with the conditions of COVID-19. And I don't think anybody in Mobile really likes Mobile, Alabama, under the conditions of COVID-19. So, as soon as we control it, eliminate it, and then move forward, we're going to be better off.
Uh, just one other thing. I think you answered the question about why wear a mask at all, because obviously, wearing this mask is not protecting me. It's protecting those in front of me.
Correct.
Um, but the asymptomatic people, we keep hearing, um, "I feel fine. I don't need to wear a mask." Or, I think we heard even yesterday, asymptomatic people do not spread the virus.
Asymptomatic people do spread the virus. So, sorry about that. If you've got the virus, you can spread the virus. Just because you don't have a fever, just because you don't have symptoms, you can spread the virus. Again, if you had symptoms, it takes probably you're spreading the virus two days before you have symptoms. I have people, have friends who have, uh, young children, who, young children, young adults who've come back into the home right now, and one of them's a cancer survivor, finds out that, you know, they've been exposed, that the younger people are being exposed. And that's the risk we have. The, the 25 and 30-year-old, and as pointed out, fortunately, uh, we've had a child who died from COVID-19, but it was a complication of other issues. But the reality is, it's impacting the older people. So, question was, can asymptomatic people spread COVID-19? And the answer is yes. If you PCR test positive for COVID-19, you can spread the disease. You have the disease.
You have the disease to spread.
Say again?
You do not have to have the disease to spread. You can spread it without, but...
Well, okay, 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 okay. Well, you're, you're correct on, on contact surfaces. But, but, so you're correct. Asymptomatic spread in that method, but I'm talking about somebody who PCR tests and says, "Well, I feel good." And I apologize. You're, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Williams. Both, both, both methods, so, but they're asymptomatic spread. But somebody says, "I have a test, but I feel good. I'm just going to keep going to work." Uh, no, you're putting a risk. And this is a very infected virus. Normal flu will infect one person. This will affect three to five people.
Yeah.
So, uh, more, more contagious, and it is more, uh, negative health impacts, uh, long-term with, uh, as far as the routine flu. This is not the routine flu, but it's fortunately not as bad as other epidemics, as we talked about, yellow fever, which Mobile has endured. We will survive this. I just, I think it's important that we ask the city council to do what we can to help protect the spread of this virus.
Thanks.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
Uh, good afternoon, Dr. Ishold.
Hello, Mr.
I just have a couple of questions, and I know that you said, stated that this virus been around approximately 104 days. I had several constituents have stated that, um, they believe that virus been around longer since, you know, February, uh, January. Is that any true to that, or is it just true that it been around 100 days or?
Well, I'm talking about Mobile, Alabama.
Yes, sir. That's what I'm saying.
So, we're a very transit community. So, if we look at the I-10, I-65 corridor, we have lots of people who come through. We know the first case was out, uh, on the West Coast, and then they claimed that was case number one, I believe, in the Seattle area in the United States. But then they did a postmortem examination, and there was somebody who had died, and they found evidence of the COVID virus, uh, before that. But the evidence of saying it's been around prior to, in the United States, prior to really the first of the year, maybe in late January, some people may say, you know, no advance, but that's the earliest time, uh, that COVID-19 in the United States, uh, has been around. Uh, and it's the exact date. I can't tell you, because as you described, there've been some asymptomatic spread, uh, but basically, it's in Mobile, we, we have our first cases at 103 days. Uh, somebody could have had asymptomatic spread, uh, and not felt bad, and just thought they had. What we had is, we had a lot of people who thought they had the flu and thought they may had strep throat. We tend to test them for COVID, for flu, strep, and for COVID. Almost 90% of them tested who were sick, had fever and symptomatic, were actually the flu early on in the January, February timeframe. So, the symptoms are very similar to the flu, except this can be a much more, uh, serious illness.
A second question I have is that, um, I know that you have the authority to mandate countywide the, um, citizens of Mobile County to wear a mask, but you said, stated, not quoting your words, but you want Mobile to be more like a model child to see exactly, you know, for you to mandate it countywide. Uh, my question is that if we, if this passed today for 30 days, when would you know that the city of Mobile would need to, you know, extend it more than 30 days, and would you need to mandate it countywide?
All right. The, uh, the discussion first about countywide was on discussion with the governor and with Scott Harris, the state health officer, was the idea is that we need to look at the municipalities where we have the most, uh, diseases, we talked about yesterday, uh, and have a further delineation of that. But that was the idea, is we need to have focus on those, because all shoes, you know, all shoes don't fit every foot. Uh, and the idea would be is that we then get this piece done, look and see what it looks like, uh, then have the discussion with, uh, the council of mayors, uh, and then, uh, push forward with the idea of having, uh, in the unincorporated areas, because the citizens of Battlebatty or the citizens of Mount Vernon probably have the right to due process their going forward, and their mayors need to discuss, uh, what, how that works and impacts their communities. And as we go forward, I'm, I think we need to, you know, have that discussion in the next, uh, week, uh, or before, even maybe tomorrow, by Friday, to see what their intentions are and see how we then move this forward. So, uh, to answer yes, uh, but that was under the governor's. While we're having this discussion, was on the advice of the governor, uh, and the state health officer, uh, as we've done previous things, uh, we have time to have this discussion, uh, and, and right now, uh, I commend you for doing it. And then I think we will have a discussion if we pass. Let's see what y'all pass, uh, and then have a discussion with the other mayors and, uh, and give the opportunity, and then see where there are any gaps or how we best protect the health and well-being of our community.
So, what would be your recommendation for the city to look at this and state that we need to leave it at 30 days and be done with it, or is, you know, extend it more than 30 days? Should we do three weeks' time, four weeks?
I, I think the, the general, we have to kind of look at what the governor's order has been. It's been expiration date, so I'd say have an expiration date and, and then automatically renew it if there's, you know, evidence this is the summertime, uh, and go. But if, at a maximum, 120 days before we have to have a discussion, or 150 days at this level, but look at the, the data and, you know, it, it could renew as we go forward. If for some reason this has seasonal variation, uh, then, um, I'd love it. I mean, I think everybody would, is all of a sudden, uh, we see it going away like the regular influenza A that we have. So, my suggestion would be at least 30 days, maybe six weeks, uh, and then look at it again and renew it for another six weeks to 12 weeks. And I think somewhere on the order of 90 days, we'll have some good data. Uh, if you're willing to put it in until the, uh, epidemic or the pandemic has ended, uh, that's completely at your discretion. Uh, but I think the public would find it more palatable, uh, to have it somewhere, uh, you know, the, on, on a, on a timeframe that's, that's not like the smoking ordinance, this is forever.
That's permanent, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but you don't think 30 days would be long enough to really tell? Is that's what you're saying?
I think that 30 days is just, I mean, I'm, this is a skyhook, because we don't really know what's going to happen with COVID-19 in the next 30 days. I, I just say that. It's an absolute bare minimum. Personally, I would say 60 days would be more realistic. Uh, let's get through the summer, uh, and, and then, uh, and then have, you have an opportunity if you're willing to have another 60 days after that, basing on data. But I, I think, hopefully, Burt, this is just Burt Ishold's opinion, medical science is working really, really hard for a vaccine, and we hope that something will be out before the first of the year. So, if the virus will slow down, we will end up having a, a mixed of, of influenza and COVID when we get to September, October timeframe. So, you know, face covering would be helpful with that, too. But, because the portal entry is still through the nose and the mouth for the main spread of the disease. As you pointed out, Mr. Williams, the surfaces is where you rub your hand and, you know, put it to your face. And I think we're all trying to, to do that. I personally have one coffee cup that I keep in my office, and that's what I drink coffee out of, and I, I've quit drinking coffee at the office.
All right, thank you.
So, thank you very much.
I have some more questions.
And before you go, I hate to keep monopolizing you, Dr. Ishold, but, uh, since Councilman Small was asking about a timeline, with the governor's order staying in place until the end of the month, and she has some mandates in her order, so if we do 30 days like you were suggesting, we would be mirroring her order and then putting a few extra things on top of that, like retail and some general spaces, because her order already has a lot of mandates.
Well, it does. Well, it does. And if the city council wanted to sit down and say, and if this one renews based on the same time schedule of that order, I think they're getting the best, they're getting the scientists from University of Alabama Birmingham, and Public School of Public Health in Birmingham, they're getting real solid information. And if you wanted to tie this to the governor's order, that might be a very easy way for this as a legislative body to sit down and say, you know, as that renews, this renews. But you're correct, and it's, the reason the governor's doing it is because we don't know. And, you know, we just need to be as cautious as we can, and save as many lives as we can.
Right, because there are already so many mandates anyway, under her order. It would seem to make sense, if we do something, that we would mirror hers for only the timeline that she has extended, rather than trying to go out a further sixty, ninety days, something like that.
That would be, that would be fine, and I feel very good that she's got really, really bright people working with her timeline. And the idea is that we just need, and right now, we have a high incidence of spread, as the new maps have come out with the state. We're in orange, but I anticipate in the next week or so, we're going to be a red county. Baldwin County was not, until the beaches opened up, the number of cases in Baldwin County. These are new maps that just came out, Mr. Williams, with color coding. Are you familiar with those? No, the state just came out yesterday with new county color-coded maps.
We saw the Mobile numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, saw those Mobile numbers.
And right now, we still, we're close to the top, but I think we're going to soon change to a red color, based on what the disease activity's been in the last ten, ten days.
And it looked like three, six, six, zero, eight, which is my district, was one of the highest in the entire county.
Right. Well, that's a different map. That's one we produce, is with the zip codes on it.
Right, because we had asked about the zip codes.
But the one, there's one that's at the state level that shows all the counties by color now. Just came out yesterday, so.
Dr. Ishel.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. You're able to map the cases by zip codes, and of course, some of the zip codes overlap into unincorporated areas or different, but for the most part, you can pinpoint it well to say where the cases are coming from. The thirty days, is that enough synergy for you to kind of come to a conclusion that by having this mask ordinance in place, that we were seeing a decrease, or is that too premature?
I don't think, I think we know the incubation period. I really think thirty days would be absolutely the barest minimum we could. And I like what Ms. Gregory said, was the idea of tying this to the governor's order, because they're gonna be getting...
Well, that's thirty days now, isn't it?
Well, it's thirty days, but then they're gonna look at it again, if they renew it, that would be the minimum time, and that's why I came up with the thirty days, was the idea. But do we want to have this discussion again in thirty more days?
We would need maybe statistics in thirty days, and if the governor is keeping the pandemic and keeping things in place that people have to abide by in order to slow down and still keep businesses open, I mean, it's such a fine balance.
I understand. Absolutely, and I think we're just trying to encourage better behavior. If we get through the summer, would you feel better about it being, you know, till the first of September? Or get through the holiday weekend at the end of the summer? Might be a real good time to then get your data back to look at it again, and so that way, we have the Fourth of July holiday, and then we have...
Labor Day.
Labor Day, and then get through Labor Day, as we then get a chance to look at more data, and, you know, consider extending at that time, if the council found that.
I mean, would people, you make, or, the numbers are counted every single day, and it's reported. People have a website they can go to. The mayor's been good about, you know, contacting citizens with the numbers. So, I mean, people can watch that on their own, but I'm just wondering if the goal is, like I said, we want to keep businesses open. And I have people calling me to say that they have walked away from a business when they didn't feel comfortable, because people were not social distancing, and they weren't wearing masks. So, I think that the economy would get better when more people felt like they could come out and participate in their grocery shopping, and not have to do it online or whatever.
Well, I think that's factually correct, and I think that people are staying inside because they don't feel like other people are respecting their rights, and their health, and their well-being. And so, hopefully, that would encourage. But again, I completely agree with the economy's extremely important, the healthcare extremely important. It is a fine line that we have, and Mayor, what would you, timeline, think would you...
Go with the governor's time? The governor's thing, okay. All right. Well, hopefully, we can get some numbers that the community could be aware of, if there's either a flattening, or, you know, that the numbers don't keep going up, if people will participate.
Like I say, I wish I could tell you, my crystal ball was clear, but we really have to keep looking at the data on a regular basis, and one shoe doesn't fit all, so.
And I think when the hospitals shut down elective surgeries, that was very unfortunate for a lot of residents in our community. I mean, not getting their basic needs met, and only emergencies being seen.
And I think this will help, even when people need to go get their elective surgery or get their healthcare right now, people are scared to go get their teeth cleaned.
Right.
And Mr. Daze, you were spot on about the hospitals. This has been, yesterday, very economically negative impact to the medical community.
I think so. I think that was definitely compromised when it was shut down. And then that sent a message to citizens to stay away, even when they tried to initially reopen.
Any?
I have a couple of few lines. I wasn't out here yesterday, but I did review the meeting and appreciate the time that you've expended, and the time of others, of all opinions and perspectives and vantage points. This is, really worked out to be a very emotional issue, and I can appreciate the arguments and merits of the arguments on both sides. Look, that's the question I have for you, is, don't you have the authority to do this in and of your office?
Correct.
County-wide?
Correct. The authorities in state law that allows the state health officer, Jefferson County health officer, and the Mobile County health officer, it's very vague, it's a very old law. But again, on the advice of the governor, her on Wednesday discussion on telephone conference call, was that she advised, was that in order to move this forward, each municipality needs to look at their disease burdens, and then they need to move forward in a very logical manner, and then that's what we are following here. So, again, one shoe doesn't fit all. If we pass this in the city of Mobile, this is where we have, as we talked about, Mr. Small, you were, was at least fifty-six percent of the burden, from the best, is in the city limits of Mobile. We gave a number of seventy yesterday, but that was all the zip codes, by the time we were looking at zip codes, because zip codes, as you point out, Ms. Rich, cross outside the city limits, and cross other boundaries. So, that was the guidance they had. So, we're here to support the community effort. You heard all the chief medical officers from all the hospitals. Yesterday, you heard the county medical society, which are all the physicians, you hear your county health officer, and then we're going to follow through with doing some other issues, but it's really fundamental that we get this from the city of Mobile. And as the governor pointed out, the enforcement piece is, comes really from the municipalities. And if we don't get the municipalities to own it, then we're really not gonna have the impact, is how the government made her statement.
We've had some speakers here from other municipalities. One from Saraland, a couple from Grand Bay, it appears. So, what would the game plan be if this is, and let me just state for the record, I'm a sponsor of this ordinance, so I'm on board. This isn't me being, I'm trying to understand some of what you said, and I have the highest and utmost respect for you, but I want to make certain I understand what the next step would be. So, we're gonna pass here the ordinance, potentially, and then the goal is to go to the other municipalities. So, what if you don't get support in Saraland, or if you don't get support in Grand Bay? With all of us kind of being interconnected, the four hospitals that are here, those persons come from all of the cities.
Well, they actually come from further away than that. No babies delivered in Washington County right now, so all labor and delivery out of Washington County, and I think Clark County, only Grove Hills, only places providing maternity care right now. So, we get a tremendous amount of business, we get business from across the Mississippi State line into Mobile County, and we get that coming from the north down. So, you're absolutely correct. The plan would be, let's see what y'all, what this organization passes, and let's see, consider it as the model for us to go forward, for us, the health department, to go forward with the other municipalities, and encourage them to do alike and similar manner, and then see where we have any gaps, or where we have any opportunities. And again, looking at data, if it turned out to be in, say, the community of Bala Batry, which I don't think is true, and I don't think it's true for any community, this disease crosses all geopolitical lines, is that they turn around and said, "We've tested everybody in the city of Bala Batry, and we have no COVID-19." You know, that could be an argument for them to say, "Why should we do something if we've tested a hundred percent of our population?" My argument would be, is that there's still people coming in, you know, retailers, and, you know, bringing things in, and are you gonna test on a regular basis to make sure you don't have any spread of the disease? So, that was, that would be an example where you'd say, this particular entity, because they're going to have the capacity and the desire, and they're testing frequently their population, okay, they're going to find the cases early, and then isolate them. In our case, we have such a large burden of disease at this time, we have to just stop the spread of it. And then we will continue to track the cases on an individual basis, which we're doing now. So, somebody tests positive, we are communicating with them, we're then testing their immediate contacts, and then we're quarantining them. In fact, I signed a quarantine order yesterday afternoon. So, we still have some old quarantine laws that have to be used occasionally when people won't do what they want to do, but not very often. Most people do what they're supposed to do.
When you're tracking this law, should it go into places in the city and our planning jurisdiction? It will go into that area, too?
And that's, and that's exactly right.
So, yeah.
You know, and so that's gonna be, and then we'll sit down and see where it goes, and so I've been in communication with representatives of the various mayors, and then we will get this out. Mayor Stimson said when we pass this, he will make sure I get a copy of it, and then I will make sure it gets out to the others, and then we will push forward. It's, you know, it needs to be a team effort. This is, this is one of those things where we all gotta, you know, work hard to contain and control the spread of this disease.
Thank you. Any other questions of Dr. Ishel? Thank you so much.
Well, and thank you, everyone, and have a safe and happy Fourth of July holiday. Thank you.
Mr. President, Ms. Anton came in late and wants to know if she can speak.
Absolutely. I don't have a, if you, Mr. Hill, if you don't mind, thank you. Okay.
Good afternoon.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everybody. Was that Dr. Ishel?
Yes, ma'am.
Many, many years ago, I worked at Mobile...
We got to, hold on, hold on, thank you. No, I, thank you very much.
Okay.
Ms. Anton, if you could give me your name and your address, please.
Oh, my name is Ms. America, I mean...
I don't want your church address, I appreciate it.
Irene Anton, twenty-two oh-two Clinton Street.
There we go.
Mobile, Alabama, better known as Ms. America.
All right.
Okay, I'm here today. Yesterday, they were spraying for mosquitoes, you know, that thing that go around and spray for mosquitoes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was a flu, that was a virus as well. Okay, as I was saying, Dr. Ishel's daddy, we worked at Mobile Infirmary. We didn't take out the wicking clothes home, they washed them at the hospital. We went out in the street clothes. Now, they could do whatever, and it's not necessarily this virus. A cold is a virus. And my point is, you can eat ice cream and all of that and cure it. I would call this a double flu. And to make this mandatory, that's one thing until another. They hit me in the head when I came in there to see what my temperature was. They don't hit us in the head normally. My temperature was eighty, I mean, ninety-eight point one. You don't believe that? And I'm not on any kind of medication, bless my heart, as far as I know. And I'm eighty-eight and still moving. But I'm here today to tell you all to do all the things that you've normally been doing with your different stuff. You don't put the odorants under your arm, have aluminum in it. Well, you don't bathe with oxygen soaked like I do. The mosquitoes and all of that bother you all, because you have cologne and all that on it. And you take a shower, and you get your clothes on. But you should sit down in a tub and soak with whatever, and all of that stuff wouldn't be happening. And excuse me for saying this, sir, you are a minister, and you know who is in charge of all of this. Is that right?
Absolutely.
Okay, then, because the people are doing so many crazy things now, he giving you a wake-up call, us, a wake-up call. And I came down here to say that, because now, they aren't the distance to part each other, they're not whatever. You can still hug a person, how that gonna get on your clothes? If it gonna get on your clothes, it should've been getting on your clothes all the time, that's all I'm saying. I mean, it should've been already getting on your clothes. Okay?
All right.
I got, any more time?
Thank you.
Oh, man.
You got some more time.
I haven't been down here in a while, because I have to catch the bus. Nobody will pick me up and bring me down here. What you laughing at? So, you'll pick me up? Preacher, thank you. And seriously, no. They have on the TV, the District of One, the District of One have the most crime, and that's not the truth. We have the less crime in the whole group, and I wanted to say that as well. And I talked to the chief of police, he agreed with me, I don't mean, yeah, the chief of police, he agreed with me, and he said he was gonna find out why they had that on TV. But I just want you all to know, well, we got a whole lot of litter there, we need some more litter signs, but don't litter, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I think, that's, well, it's good seeing you, Ms. Anton.
With what?
Thank you.
Ma'am?
It's good seeing me?
It's good to see you. Yes, ma'am. All right. Come on. If you could give us your name and address, please.
Yes. Jennifer Poore, fifty-four ninety-seven Regent C. Oaks Drive North. Okay. Email? I emailed, yes, yes. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to just say something. I really can see the view of everybody that I've listened to. I, I really can see the view of everybody that I've listened to speak here. Everybody has, you know, very good opinions and they all matter. And you have a very difficult job. I don't, I don't, you know, wish that I was in your position at all. But I'm a physician and my husband is an ICU physician. He takes care of the sickest of the sick right now. He's been, you know, on the front lines. We have six kids. And so from my perspective, I think there's a way to go about this that accommodates everybody. And somebody did talk about it earlier about at the level of the businesses. We don't have a right to tell a business that we're not gonna go by what they tell us to do. Just like we all wear shoes in businesses, we should all wear masks. So if the businesses required masks, then I believe that everybody would at least know they need to get a mask. And right now, I feel like a lot of families don't have masks. They don't know how to get them, they don't know where to get them. I know there's videos of how to do it and all that kind of stuff. But I made masks myself and it wasn't as easy as I thought it was gonna be. This is my, my doing. But kids don't, you know, they don't fit in the normal size masks. And so we, we have a lot of things that go into this decision. And if businesses require them and they had them, you know, right there at the business, like when you go to the eye doctor, we, my six-year-old didn't have a mask, we had to buy one, it was a dollar. I think that there's a way that we can kind of, number one, make sure everybody figures out how to get a mask. But number two, enforce people to wear them without it being a personal, you know, at their personal level. It's the right of the community is why they need to wear it. And so these businesses having their own policy and putting it on their doors and all that sort of stuff. I mean, I just believe it's a, a lot easier to enforce because, you know, people can choose where they do business. They can't choose if they're gonna go outside and walk and, you know, wherever. I also think of instances like being at the park and sitting on your, you know, on your blanket. Nobody's near you, there's zero chance of spreading a virus at that instance, you know. So how are you gonna enforce people to wear masks in instances where it's not necessary? So every place, every business, every city, you know, building and everything can really evaluate their specific situation. Make their policy and it, and put it up where everybody can see it. And I think everybody would follow that or else they can't go in, you know, they can't, they can't participate. And if a business specifically wanted to be subordinate or, you know, not follow your recommendations, people can choose not to go there. And frankly, I don't go somewhere where people aren't wearing masks. So I don't know, that's just my thought, is that this, a blanket ordinance is gonna be, provide some enforcement issues and create some sub-populations of people that are gonna stand up and say they're not gonna do it no matter what. And I don't know, I feel like we can come to a compromise or, you know, make it an easier way. Just by, every single place you want to go has their own mask policy. And hopefully they'll make the right choice and have, you know, no exceptions, you have to have it. But if they don't, don't, don't go there.
Can I comment? And I appreciate your thought process on that. Because with the smoking ordinance, as the city was debating it, it took a number of years. But we found that a lot of corporations did have policies. And so the method of, if we took away people being able to smoke after they ate, they would go out of business. But all these restaurants were doing it on a natural type of event because they were actually seeing people turning away if they allowed it to keep happening. So I, I see it as a, almost like a dovetail situation. I'm just hoping this is so temporary. But in order to keep people feeling like they can go into a business, then maybe they could take our policy that we're saying is, and they could put it on the door of their business. And it would take them out of the loop of having to say, you can't come in. But they would, we would be the individuals, the government, which I know that's what people do not want, I get that. But it's a way, under these conditions, with the timeline that we have, in order to keep businesses open, because the last time of getting businesses closed was devastating. And we're trying to do something that allows people to go out and to still participate and not feel like they are putting themselves at risk.
That's right. I mean, businesses are gonna wanna be open. They're not gonna want their employees to get sick.
No, of course.
They're gonna want their employees to wear masks and for customers to wear masks.
Right. And there are some corporations that have put down the gauntlet of saying that you can't come in. And that was certainly their choice. And should more businesses do it, I think they should. That would be a wise business decision. But we're taking this because of looking at what we did last time and how disruptive it was on numerous levels. So it's a way to get it accomplished under this timeline, to try to keep the numbers down and keep people well.
Thank, any other questions, any other comments? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Mr. President.
Mr.?
Before we vote on the orders, orders that before us, I would just like to make a few comments.
We're gonna open it up for anybody that would, another councilman.
Mr. President, we don't even have it before us. We have, no, we don't even have a motion before us right now.
Right. Let's, let's get it.
Mr. President.
Ma'am, ma'am, one, one, one second. Now, no, no, ma'am, no voice, we, we might need some help. If, if we, if this occurs, one, one more time, we're gonna give you some help. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Richardson, is your comments pertinent to the item on your agenda?
I wouldn't wanna talk about nothing now.
Well, can we, can we take it up while we take the item up?
I don't mind that.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Ordinance is held over 39019, ordinance requiring wearing face coverings in public.
So moved.
Second.
We're properly moved to second, end of discussion.
If, if you don't mind, if you don't mind.
President, I'd like to go ahead and propose an amendment. So we get the amended version up.
Mr. President, what you done is, we'll go down because as long as you come back to the discussion.
Absolutely. We, I guarantee you, everyone will have all the time that they want to, to express their opinion.
The one will actually vote on it.
Mr. Dave's. I, I move that we amend what's on the agenda by the latest addition that we got from Mr. Arledge. Is that okay? Is that a good amendment? Yeah, okay.
Second.
We're properly moved to second, end of discussion.
Mr. President, I think that maybe we could have that read for the record in its entirety. All the changes, because this is kind of going on very quickly. Generally, we'll be on to the next legislature meeting, but the decision of five, a little councilman have decided that we need to do this in a day, 24 hours after its announcement, yesterday afternoon. And so for the sake of clarity and transparency, maybe we ought to have all of the changes.
Why don't we just?
For the last 24 hours, read it out.
Why don't we just ask Mr. Arledge to read the amended version in its entirety?
Well, I mean, are you saying the entire thing or just?
Or have the clerk read it? It's not that many pages.
I'm in favor of having the entire ordinance, the amended version, read in its entirety.
The amended version.
Madam City Clerk, will you read the entire ordinance? That's before us, so that everyone will be familiar with, with all the terms of this proposal.
Ordinance 39 dash 019, an ordinance to require wearing face coverings in the city of Mobile, Alabama during the COVID-19 public health emergency, sponsored by Mayor Stimson and Councilors Manzi, Rich, and Dave's. Whereas by proclamation dated March 13th, 2020, Governor Kay Ivey found that the appearance of COVID-19 in the state of Alabama creates a potential of widespread exposure to an infection, an infectious agent that poses a significant risk of substantial harm to a large number of people and declared a state public health emergency under Alabama Code Section 31 dash 9 dash 1 et cetera. Whereas, a resolution and proclamation of emergency dated March 17, 2020, the City Council of the City of Mobile pursuant to its authority to provide for the health and safety of persons and property under Alabama Code Sections 31 dash 9 dash 10, parentheses B, parentheses 1, and to preserve the health of the inhabitants of the municipality under Alabama Code Sections, Section 11 dash 45, 1, declare that it is in the best interest of the city to adopt policies and procedures consistent with directives from the Centers for Disease Control, CDC, to prepare and protect the city from dangers arising from the unprecedented pandemic arising from the spread of COVID-19. And whereas the City Council is authorized to adopt ordinances to preserve the health and welfare of the inhabitants of the municipality, Alabama Code Section 11 dash 45 dash 1. And whereas the council finds that COVID-19 presents a clear and present threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the City of Mobile and that it is, that it is in the best interest of the community to require the wearing of face coverings in public places to control community spread of COVID-19 in the City of Mobile and its police jurisdiction. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Mobile, Alabama, that face covering shall be required in public places within the City of Mobile to slow the spread of the novel coronavirus disease known as COVID-19 as follows. Section 1, definitions. 1. Face Covering. A device to cover the nose and mouth of a person to impede the spread of saliva or other fluids during speaking, coughing, sneezing, or other intentional or involuntary action. Medical-grade face coverings are not required. Coverings may be fashioned from scarves, bandanas, or other suitable fabrics. The face covering must cover the mouth and nose of the wearer. A face covering is not a mask for purposes of Chapter 39, Article 9, Mass. Sections 39 dash 191 et cetera. 2. Public Place. Any place other than an individual's home or personal vehicle that is generally open or available to the public, including retail stores and transportation services. 3. Social Distancing. Measuring at all ti, maintaining at all times physical separation between individuals of not less than six feet. 4. Vulnerable Individuals. Elderly individuals or individuals with serious underlying health conditions, including high blood pressure, chronic lung, lung disease, diabetes, obesity, asthma, and those whose immune system is compromised such as by chemotherapy for cancer and other conditions requiring such therapy. Section 2. Face Covering shall be worn at all time by persons in public places in the City of Mobile except that persons engaging in businesses and activities regulated by the Order of the State Health Officer suspending certain public gatherings due to risk of infection by COVID-19 as amended June 30th, 2020, and further amended. And then it gives a website. Shall comply with the facial covering and social distancing requirements of the June 30 order with respect to those activities listed therein for which face, face coverings are required. Section 3. Additional Exceptions. Face Coverings are not required for: 1. Outdoor Activities in Parks and Other Open Spaces Provided Social Distancing Is Maintained. This exception does not apply to outdoor activities in parking lots, shopping malls, congested sidewalks, or other populated areas. 2. Children 10 Years of Age and Under. 3. Persons for whom wearing a face covering poses of substantial mental or physical health, safety, or security risks, such as persons who have trouble breathing, or unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove the cover without assistance. Section 4. This ordinance shall remain in effect, in effect for 30 days. Section 5. To the extent this ordinance is in conflict with other ordinances of the City of Mobile, this ordinance shall supersede the other, other ordinances until those ordinances are amended or repealed. Section 6. Failure to comply with this ordinance is punishable by a fine of $50 for the first offense and $100 for the second and each subsequent offense. Mobile City Code Section 1 dash 32, the schedule of fines is amended to include this fine. Section 7. If any subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or word of this ordinance or any application of it to any person, structure, or circumstance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by decision of a court of competent jurisdiction, then such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions or applications of this ordinance. Section 8. This ordinance shall become effective in the City of Mobile and its police jurisdiction upon its adoption, approval, and publication as required by law.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much, ma'am, Assistant City Clerk.
You're welcome.
So we have a motion or second on the amendment. And now we're at discussion. We read the ordinance in its entirety, and now we're at discussion.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gregor.
If we could, we heard from the mayor earlier about the fines and that he would rather see the police hand out masks rather than citations. I would like to ask the Public Safety Director to give us some insight as to, if this passes, how they will handle it? And would he maybe prefer to see a different type of fine in this ordinance? Before we go any further.
Yes, ma'am. And let me start off by saying that I'm fundamentally always opposed to any type of laws or ordinances that put law enforcement at odds with otherwise law-abiding people. And so as we, as I looked at this ordinance that's being proposed today, I do know we distributed 4,000 masks out to the precincts and other stations and the headquarters at the police department. It is my preference, being that it's a minor violation. There's a lot of officer discretion that is allowed by our own general orders. And so it is our preference to follow the mayor's lead on that and to hand out masks and to advise to social distance or wear a mask if they can't and look for voluntary compliance from, should this ordinance pass. The citation or the punitive aspects of the ordinance would, would only be a very last resort for us. And that would be open defiance to the, to the ordinance itself rather than voluntary compliance. So I hope that kind of answers your question.
I, I think so. But I also am concerned about, since we are adding retail stores to this because they were not part of the governor's order originally, what happens in a grocery store, a big box store, for instance, if a customer comes in and they're not wearing a mask and they're approached by an employee who says you are supposed to wear a mask and the customer then refuses and, and an incident happens? How, how is that going to be handled?
Well, like, there's a couple of different ways that that can go. I mean, he could leave the store voluntarily if he doesn't want to wear a mask or he or she. If they refuse to leave the store after being asked to leave the store, they could be arrested for trespassing at that point. If there is an altercation or they become disorderly or cause alarm or annoyance, they can be arrested for disorderly conduct. So there are many different options that, that occur when somebody violates the private property laws. And so it, it goes far beyond any citation at that point.
All right, thank you.
Well, Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Richardson?
That could have, that could happen if we didn't have a law for masks. Where an employee, if, if, if somebody working for the store come and tell an employee, we want you to leave, it's private property, they got to go, they need to go. If they don't go, it's just what, what I direct the Public Safety to say. It's even beyond a mask. You, you in somebody else's business, if they ask you to leave, you have to leave. You don't have no, this business, you have constitutional rights. No, you got, you have to leave. But, but, but what I want to say about the mask, with, with discretion leaving it up to the officers, my concern would be that I would like to see the citizens treated the same way east of I-65 as they are west of I-65. Treat, treat everybody the same. I don't want people calling me up saying, this happened to me, you know, I got in an argument. You know, I got in an argument. I think we need them, the officers ought to be told, they ought to be consistent in how, in applying whatever, you know, whatever they're going to do about the mask, ought to be consistent across the board. That's the only thing I would be concerned about. Ms. President, I would like to just speak while I have the floor, because I have not had anything to say.
Yes, sir.
And it's been, we've been here for quite a while. I would like to start off thanking all of the people who came here today to speak your mind and your heart on what we're about to do here. I was talking with Matt Anderson on my way here, and he reminded me how great this nation is. Only in America, some countries, we had persons that testified that they had a ministry and talked about God. In some countries, that's a life, you could be sentenced for death for calling on the name of the law. You can't have no Bible in some of those countries. In a country where you can come down and debate the issue, a country where you can tell the council member, "I will remember you," some countries, you wouldn't make it home. You would not make it home from wherever you were having that meeting. I'm saying we are blessed to have such a country as this, that you can come down here and say what you want to say. We have had so many people who've never been down here before until they took the council meeting to be a community meeting, that I can stand up here as long as I want to and say, "Mm-mm, mm-mm, mm-mm, mm." We are conducting the official business of the City of Mobile. And in doing so, when we are in session, you have to abide by our rules. Now, if we come into your community and have a community meeting, you can stand up there and shout and say, "Mm-mm." Can't do that down here. Yes, we're never transacting the business. I would like to, you know, many of the people came here today, came here to stand up on their constitutional rights, and I want to just say a little bit about that. Nobody in America is completely free. Without laws, we have chaos. The absence of order is disorder. The purpose of the law is to establish order. There's no other reason for the law but to establish order. In the absence of laws, it's chaos. But I probably have more to say about the Constitution than any of y'all. Now, other than the First Amendment, I don't think you'll find the word "free" in the Constitution. Freedom of speech, that's First Amendment. Beyond that, you probably threw it. It talks about liberty, but freedom? Mm-mm, you ain't gonna find that in there. The Constitution was established after 1776. For those people who say they have constitutional rights, it was established after 1776. But I want you to know that the preamble Constitution said that we hold these truths, that is, whatever's in this Constitution, to be self-evidenced that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inelible rights, and among these, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That all men are created equal. Yet from 1619 to 1865, my ancestors was evicted from the human race, and they was considered as property. And we had the same Constitution that you are talking about. The exact same Constitution. You know what it took to set them free? 500,000 people to die. Because the people that had them declared they were not going to set them free. The Civil War, where 500,000 people died to make sure that they remained in slavery. And had they not lost, my status today would probably be the same as a hog, a piece of property. But yet here I sit, here I sit as one of the leaders in the City of Mobile. This is America. This is America. And what I think has happened to us here today is that this council is trying to do the best it can to keep our people safe, and that's a part of our responsibility, safety. And there are people who with political motives, who are not thinking about their safety. They have a political agenda that goes beyond safety, and we are here trying to make sure our people are safe. That's what is happening to us. And what's, this pandemic is bigger than any individual, is bigger than any political party. If we don't get a grip on it, it could destroy all of us. There are some things we must do to get a grip on this thing, and that's all these council members is trying to do, based on the evidence supplied to us by people that's professional, medical professionals, that told us what it is we need to do to get a grip on this thing. And we are not now trying to consider what party Fred in, what party I, we don't care about no party. We trying to stop this pandemic the best way we can. And when we finally vote today, I want you, all of y'all to know, that our vote would be toward making the best decision we can to get a grip on this pandemic, to help all of our citizens to live out their lives in happiness and free of this pandemic. That's all I want to say, Mr. President.
I have a question that probably goes to public safety, if that's okay? And it deals with the exception that if somebody has a health issue, how do you expect that to play out? Would it be something also on the officer's discretion? Do they have to show something from a physician? We don't have a lot of time on this, if it's going to be enacted quickly, so.
You know, obviously, if they've got a letter from the physician, that's more than sufficient. The validity of the letter might be in question.
Right.
We're going to err on the side of the person that claims to have a medical condition. We would never order somebody to mask if they have problems breathing. And do consider that we do have people that are like that, and you have people that have anxiety.
Yes.
And so, but we'll be very conscious of it.
It talks about mental or physical health, safety, so.
That's correct. And we'll be very sensitive to that.
Right. Okay, good.
And you know, I guess I would judge success by us never having to issue a citation.
That would be great.
All right, now.
Agree.
If I could just piggyback on that one very quickly, if we could get that kind of a message out to the retailers as well, because they will be the first point of contact. If this is mandatory and someone comes in their store and they're not wearing a mask, if someone says, "I have asthma," whatever the condition is, they need to accept it rather than challenge the person.
I don't know about that now.
I mean, how else are you going to do it? Because otherwise, they call a police officer to come, and the person's going to tell the police officer the same thing.
Well, you know, we can certainly advise if we're called there, but the, again, it's private property.
Right.
We do not control what that owner says.
That's exactly right.
If he's uncomfortable with that person, he has every right to deny entry.
Well, right. I'm just saying because of the mandatory.
Right. And so, I was talking to the, if the City Council passes this law, how we would go about using discretion in those instances where people have anxiety or breathing difficulty.
Right.
Ms. President? We have not passed a law yet. Yet if you go to Costco without a mask, they give you one. If you say, "I don't want one," you can't come in. They won't let you in. So it's not even a court in law, they own the store, it's their business. They can lock the store up and let nobody in. That's not illegal. You can't come in with that. So it's not even a court in law for nothing like that. If the business say you can't come in, you can't come in.
Right. But I think the issue is that people might feel like they were being shamed, and they really had a legitimate, and it is in the ordinance that they do have an exemption to it. So I guess it's education.
He answered, the director answered that.
Yeah. I mean, it's talking about.
He's going err on the side of the citizens, he's already talking.
No, no, I'm talking about for the citizens to know and for business owners to know that it clearly is an exemption within the law, that a person can state that, and then they are not under, they're exempted. They don't have to participate in the masking, the covering.
Is that true?
Yes.
But the order still has a variety of circumstances.
Well, yeah, but.
Even with your illness, if you don't wear the mask, you're not allowed.
That would be on their private, I don't disagree with that, but I think citizens need to know that we have taken the time to exempt people who truly have legitimate reasons for not wearing it, and that's correct. So, and I guess it's up to this council, too, playing a role in getting the word out to citizens. But it's going to really be important to make sure people understand that.
We could have Mary issue a statement tomorrow.
Mr. President, whenever everybody gets through randomly speaking, you know.
I'm sorry.
Then I'd be glad to speak.
Ms. Rich, are we having a discussion now? Yes. No, I just, again, I think that any information we can get out that explains why a person does not have to wear, we are writing this into the ordinance. So it is very legitimate for someone to feel like they have either a mental issue with this, or a health issue that that precludes them, and a doctor's order would probably be best for confrontations, but I'm just saying it's certainly within their rights because that's the way we've written this, and people need to know.
Okay, it's the law.
Ms. Rich, any further?
No.
Ms. President? So if, you know, if we got a member to have a discussion on it, they want order in.
I have a question for Mr. Arledge. Mr. Arledge, I've been asked whether our definition of face coverings would include these plastic face shields.
Is a covering?
It says suitable.
Says a device to cover the nose and mouth of the person to impede the spread of saliva or other fluids through speaking, et cetera.
So I'm drawing that it would include such a, that that definition would include.
I think that's a device.
Well, you got to keep reading, folks, and this is the problem with running an ordinance through, and if I made, Mr. President, it was on my list. Number one, suitable fabrics. All you got to do is read, every sponsor ought to know every word and what it means. Because suitable fabrics is undefined. Suitable fabrics is going to go back to discretion. It's going to go to a police officer who's trained to protect us from the bad guys, but not to judge whether or not a fabric is suitable for this use or not.
Right.
And that's in the first page, first definition, suitable fabrics. And here we have one of the sponsors asking what would fit into that. There should be no exception as we're about to embark on this ordinance, what each word means. Words are important today. This is an absolute pandemic, and what we're pandemic, and what we're going to do is going to save lives. If we don't act right now, somebody's going to die and blood's going to be on our hands. This is what I've been told, and this is exactly what I warned us about yesterday. We have two things here working. We have discretion, and we have arbitrary language and dates or ages. Why 10 years old? Why did we have to define what was suitable? Why couldn't we go to the medical professionals and say, "Give me what will work," and we'll make that the minimum standard? End of discussion. But instead, yesterday, I saw a guy with, it looked like a decorative piece of pantyhose, and he stretched it over his neck, part, he had it all the way down to his chest and up to, right below his eyes, and I could make out his mustache. There was absolutely no filtration going on whatsoever. And I hate to put our police officers in conflict with, as the director said, otherwise law-abiding citizens over discretion and arbitrary language. I would ask us to really question suitable fabric. I would ask us to question whether or not we want to include all retail stores before we give them a chance to voluntarily enact their own policy. Because when we say retail stores, we're not only saying that the people who visit those stores, by the way, don't have a right to, but the owner of the retail store and their employees are affected by this ordinance as well. So we're not just telling people that visit, they have to do the right thing, and they have to maintain social distance, but so does now a private store owner, of which we give no help other than public safety, and they pay for that, and their employees. One set of words over, private transportation or transportation services. These are private vehicles owned by private company owners and their customers who are willingly riding in that car. But yet, we're going to impose some arbitrary law against them that says, not against them, that's not, that is going to affect them, that says you must wear a mask, even if we have two parties who are willing not to wear a mask and not be within six feet of each other, and possibly even have the windows down. Arbitrary keeps popping up. If we go to the exceptions, we would say that it's, it doesn't apply to park in open spaces, other open spaces, whatever that is, wherever that is, provided that they can maintain a social distance. But hey, look, that social distance and open space and all that really doesn't apply to congested sidewalks. And I don't know about y'all, but I got a definition of a congested sidewalk, and my picture is New York on New Year's Eve. That's congested. Or in Mobile, Alabama, at the Moonfire next to the stage. But two or three blocks away, that may not be the application. But yet, we're going to put officers who are already stressed in a position to determine what, first of all, whether or not it's congested, whether or not they're wearing suitable fabric. I just tell you that, everybody knows where I stand, and I'm not going to speak anymore after saying this, we need to be very careful when we make statements and claim them to be facts, and then get ready to vote, rush to vote, and not know the words or what the impact of our ordinances are going to be. Thank you.
Call for the question.
I would, I have a few words to say. The primary purpose of government is to ensure the safety of the public.
Amen.
In the United States Constitution, one of the reasons our government was established was to promote the general welfare. I quoted that out of the Constitution. There are some things that are not in doubt, that are facts. We're faced with a real and present danger to the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Every responsible health organization in this country has said as much, including those here in Mobile. Our infections are spiking. The larger base of infected individuals can put our hospitals at risk. Once the hospitals fill up, it's too late to act. Face masks retard the spread of the virus. Again, every responsible health organization in the country has said so. We had the. We had the Mobile County Health Director here, we had the President of the Mobile County Medical Society, we had the CMOs of the hospitals, all came in here and said we had a crisis on our hands and then we needed to act by passing this ordinance. The doctors have written a prescription. We need to take the prescription. Now, we have tried on the national, state and local level to obtain widespread use of masks without making them mandatory. Those efforts have failed. Business owners have not made it mandatory, the public have not adopted them. The ordinance as enacted has a 30-day sunset provision and except, and exceptions for children, certain outdoor activities and persons for whom wearing a face covering poses substantial mental or physical health, safety or security risks. We have an opportunity to try this for 30 days and see how it works. I'm sensitive to imposing mandates on the public and the difficulties likely to be encountered in enforcement. We have difficulties in enforcement in every ordinance we have on the books. Our police officers are used to exercising judgment on whether to issue a ticket or not. It may surprise some of you to learn that on occasion in the last 50 years, I've been arrested on a few occasions. And sometimes I've gotten a ticket and sometimes I've gotten a warning. And I'm sure that our police officers will be well capable of knowing when to issue the ticket and when to issue the warning. We, we're dealing with something we've never dealt with before. And as Dr. Ischold said, the, the situation changes as we go from week to week. We know things now that we didn't know six weeks ago, and we'll know things six, six weeks from now we don't know today. If, if we had been through all this four times before, we'd know what to do. But public officials have a responsibility to act and to act in a timely manner. This may, we may end up looking back on this and deciding this was not the right decision. But at this particular point in time, I think it's a reasonable and effective use of our power to protect the public. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. There, there are no perfect, there are no perfect laws. If we wanna debate that this ordinance is flawed, the consti, so is the Constitution. The Constitution give us freedom of speech. Go out to the airport and say, I have a gun and see what happened to you. Let's rock and roll, brother.
Yes. Thank you very much. We can't afford a shutdown, and if this helps to limit the exposure and the stress on our hospitals and on our healthcare officials, then it is the least we can do. Um, the, the other alternative is really not very pretty. It's a lot of sick people suffering, families suffering, and it's, it's not a Chicken Little syndrome, it's not a political syndrome, it's a health issue. We have been overburdened with so many things going on nationwide that people have taken camps, that means you're conservative, you're a liberal, on, on this, it should be just literally the health aspect of our citizens. And as Councilman Dave said, it is an obligation that the city has to keep people safe. And there are rules and regulations that dovetail into making that a reality for our community. This is temporary and we have exceptions. We have increased the age because of the number of citizens who approached our offices about having it under, two and under, even though that's CDC. And I hope that parents will really go by the guidance of CDC. But in order to be respectful to parents, most kids under the age of 10 are staying close next to their parent today, so they're being monitored. And a 10-year-old might be asked, or someone over 10, to go and get the butter or the cheese, and they'll go off and then encounter other citizens. But for the most part, 10 seems to work our community right now, and I still hope it's helpful, but I urge parents to think of their child, if they are amenable, to please mask them under that age because they too can produce the virus that then gets into the air. But the slowdown and the shutdown was a terrible devastating aspect on so many levels, on so many people's lives, that if we can do this one thing right now and make a difference, then we should do it. And I hope, again, don't look upon it as I'm in a political position and I'm using the weight of my office, because that is, and that's not true. It's strictly the health. It's a way to protect our healthcare industry. I am married to that healthcare industry, so I'm very close to it. And I just wanna tell you, it was devastating to watch people who could not come in unless they had an emergency. And it was difficult, it was difficult on the personnel who wants to help and keep people well. And normally in a slowdown economy, medicine is never affected. It was big deal when medicine got affected because it had such a rippling effect. We can't do this again, and we can't do it to businesses who found it extremely difficult to hang on, some we lost. So this is something we as a community, and please don't look at, upon it as something that is going to last forever. We're hoping it's not. But the vaccine is up the road and this pandemic that we're under does not have a timeline. So we have to do what is best for everyone, and I, I trust our officials to handle it correctly. It's very sensitive and people are on edge, and we get it. But let's do, let's do this as a community and try to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Any further discussion on this item as a matter?
Um, yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you. I appreciate what Mrs. Rich said. I think calling, uh, or saying that it's not Chicken Little is, is a pretty good comparison. So I appreciate that and agree with her on that. We've received emails from numerous people and phone calls as well. A lot of folks don't believe we as city council members are legislators, nor do we have the right to pass these laws. That is absolutely not true. We are legislators, we are at the municipal level, and we pass laws every day, some that a lot of people believe violate their constitutional rights, like you can't put your trash out more than 48 hours in advance. You can only put your garbage can out, you know, at seven in the morning or something like that, and then you have to pull it back in. There are lots of things that we do as legislators that people don't like, but we do it because we are here to protect the health and safety of all of our citizens. And sometimes we have to do things that are not popular. Sometimes we have to pass laws to protect you because unfortunately, people just won't do the right thing all the time. And yes, there are speed limits and people speed all the time, and you'll, you'll say, well, I, I speed, I don't get caught. Well, you will one day, and when you do get caught, you will, you know, pay a ticket. We are currently under a state order. So the state order is in effect and has mandates all across the board. So what this ordinance is really doing is adding some to it for, for retail and for some other general areas. And while I hate the idea that we're having to do this, that we are mandating everybody to have to wear masks, um, it's something that I feel we are at a point now where we, we really have no choice but to go forward to try to help slow down the spread of the virus. We got the numbers in from the Health Department. More cases were diagnosed this week, more people are in the hospital. It is not a hoax. There is no hoax when people are being diagnosed and put in the hospital because of this virus. It is, it's real. I am hopeful that if people wear the mask and help reduce the spread of the virus, then those numbers will go down. Hopefully 30 days will, will work. I would hate to say that we come back 30 days and the numbers have gone up because Fourth of July is here and people probably will go out and do what they're going to do anyway, no matter what we do, no matter what we pass today. We may see parties, we may see gatherings, and this, this may not have an effect. I hope I'm wrong. I hope people will listen to us and will be responsible and stay away from everybody, stay the six feet away and wear masks and protect each other, because that's what we're doing. My mask is not protecting me, it's protecting you from me. So that's what we have to keep in mind. Like Mrs. Rich said and like you've heard from others, the last thing we want to do is have another shutdown of our economy. Businesses in my district have already shut down, have closed their doors for good because they cannot make it because of the shutdown before, and now because people are not going shopping, they're afraid to get out. Like Mrs. Rich pointed out, some people will go into a store, they'll look around and they'll see nobody's wearing masks and they don't wanna go in. And yeah, that may be the older folks, but the older folks have a lot of money to spend and they want to go to the brick and mortar stores. They're not necessarily ordering online. Every time you order online, there's a good possibility that somebody's job in the brick and mortar store is going away. So we have to protect our businesses, our tax revenues and, and our people all at the same time. Economy is important, health is important, and we are here to protect the health and safety of our citizens. We heard from nine doctors yesterday, all medical, chief medical officers of all of our hospitals here in the city of Mobile. I heard some people say that, oh, well, they must have been bought off by George Soros. Really? You really think the doctors in Mobile, Alabama have been bought off by George Soros? And that you don't believe what they have to say? But these are the very same doctors who are at the hospitals and in the offices that when you or your loved ones get sick, you will go to their hospitals and you'll have to call on them for help. And I wonder if you'll believe them then? You know, we have to do what is in the best interest, what we believe is in the best interest of all of our citizens, and we're doing the best we can to prevent more harm. So again, I'm okay with doing this temporarily. It's not something I necessarily want to do, I hate to do, but it's something I feel like we as a responsible city council have to do at this time. And I appreciate Dr. Ischold and all the doctors coming. I also appreciate, um, the responsibility that we are giving to our Mobile Police Department. That's why I had so many questions, Jimmy, about how will this be enforced? How are we going to do it? Because we don't want to make anybody criminals. That's the last thing we want to do. We want to protect people. And hopefully this will be exactly what we are looking for, and we will certainly keep tabs on it and, um, pray that it will be the right thing. Thank you.
All righty. Ready to vote?
Of the amendments.
Aye.
All opposition. So now we're going back to the original item as a matter. Any discussion of that?
No.
Oh, yes, Mr. President. Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to thank, um, everyone for coming out, um, in person, the citizens, the doctors, uh, for coming out in person. Uh, thank you for the emails and even the phone calls. You know, I heard, you know, on this afternoon that this is possibly could be a host, you know, this could be fake news. I'm not a first responder, but I am a last responder. And the horror stories that I hear when I have different families coming to my office is very, very sad. When a loved one had to die at a hospital by theyself, not surrounded by their families. When a loved one had to die at a nursing home, um, and not surrounded by their families, and the families can't even go to see their loved ones at the nursing home when they had the COVID diseases. You know, as you all know that we had, many of our nursing homes had got affected because of COVID. And just imagine how many families have not, was not able to go and see their loved ones, you know, in the nursing homes. That is very touching, and the next thing, they couldn't see their loved ones in the nursing home for two months, but yet the next time they see their loved ones, it's inside of a, a casket. It, it, it doesn't feel good to see families suffering like that. You know, we have not flattened the curve at all, and we still in our first wave. And since we have not flattened the curve and we still in our first wave, we need to take all precautions that we need to take. And I'd rather be face, with a face covering for the next 30 days to see businesses close down. Yes, I suffer a little bit because I wasn't able to go to the mall and get my cinnamon bun. When I first heard that the mall was closing down, I ran to the mall to get me a cinnamon bun, and unfortunately they had closed down a day earlier before I was able to get it. Now I'm able to go and get it with my face covered up. But even going to the Sam's Club when the thieves were shut down, I had ran into one particular lady, and I think it was her daughter and her granddaughter was with her. And she was just in Sam's, just coughing, just coughing. It wasn't a night even covering her mouth up. And she was in the freezer department. What was she doing, you know, was she spreading the COVID inside of Sam's? Was she spreading the COVID disease inside of the freezer department? And when I saw her, I wanted to say something to her, but I decided not to, and I just went ahead and spaced my distance away from her. While we've been in this meeting, we had two people to my left and one person to my right to cough. I'm not too sure the person to my right, when they was present, did they cover their mouth? But two people to my left, one person had coughed twice and they did cover their mouths, but one person had coughed and did not cover up their mouth at all. What did you just do to us sitting up in this arena? You know, the thing about it is we have to respect each other, especially if you want people to turn back around and respect you. You know, I heard, you know, a couple people say life and death is in the power of the tongue, and I do believe that. I am a Christian. But the thing about it is you have life and you have death. And what comes between life and death at many a time? Sickness. Sickness. Life and death is in the power of the tongue, but what about sickness? And that's what we talking about. Yeah, there is a low percentage rate of deaths, but you got plenty of sickness that's coming behind of COVID-19. I don't want your sickness. I don't want your germs. I don't want your virus. I'm not trying to take my germs, your germs, your virus to my mother at home. I'm not trying to take your germs and your virus to my godmother at her house. Life and tongue is in the power, excuse, life and death is in the power, but God give us five senses. It don't take but one sense to know that I need to put a mask on to protect you, my mother and all the loved ones that I love. So today I will be joining the rest, some of my colleagues in supporting this ordinance to push it forth. It's not a great thing to do, you know, to wear a covering all the time, but if this could save a life, if it could save a sickness, that's something that I'm willing to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Vice President.
Let's go.
Any further discussion? Well, I, I wanna have a few remarks, if you don't mind. This is an important item, and this is an important issue. And, uh, we are in unprecedented, unprecedented times dealing with an unprecedented level of a pandemic. I am appreciative of the support that this ordinance has gone up throughout the community. I, I see this mask as A, protecting me, but B, respecting you. That's exactly how I see it. And if we have to endure a few moments, a few days of inconvenience so that we can live and that more of our citizens can live, then I'm on board with it. Is, is this the, a perfect ordinance? I don't know, I don't know. By no stretch do I know of a perfect ordinance. There's no perfect law because there aren't perfect lawmakers. We aren't living in a perfect society. But we're doing what we feel and what we know is right, guided by the medical professionals to protect and safeguard the citizens that we have charge of. I absolutely feel that. And so I've gotten a multitude of phone calls. I'm assuming that someone has disseminated my number in some of these Facebook groups. That's fine. I probably got about 200 phone calls yesterday, and I had a lady tell me, who by the way, did not live in the city limits, and 90% of those who called me don't live in the city limits, to say that she would rather, she went a week wearing a mask and everywhere she went, she detected a foul odor. It, it just, it just, a foul odor just followed her around everywhere that she went. And after I got through talking with her and gleaning from her where she was going, what she... was she going in the place out of her normal routine, I finally asked her, "Has she ever tried putting a mint in her mouth?" And seeing if that would cure that foul odor? Why are we on the phone? This is a true story. Why are we on the phone? Because she was offended that I suggested that. She happened to have some allergies, and she did it. It solved her problem. All I'm saying, there are those who would accuse us of being liberal zealots. I've been accused of being bought and paid for by someone named George Soros. I don't know how many times I've heard that. What we are only concerned about is the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of the city of Mobile. We have that charge. And I am absolutely confident in that this ordinance will impact someone's life. Somebody's life may be saved, and it may very well be a family member, a close friend, a neighbor of somebody who's so passionately against it. And so I am in support. I wish we had moved a little quicker in going down this road, but I'm hopeful that as a result of this, we'll be able to continue to flatten the curve, lower our numbers, and hasten the day where we'll be able to return to some semblance of normalcy. That concludes my remarks. Any further discussion?
Let's vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move to adjourn.
So the record is 6, if I'm not mistaken, 6 to 1?
I think the mayor would like to speak.
And we do have some comments from Ms. Simpson, and we'll hear your motion.
Yes, now that the city council has made it official that we will have the mandatory face mask ordinance, it will now be up to the Mobile Police Department, you know, to enforce this over the next 30 days. I can assure you that our effort is going to be to help our citizens comply with this order. And as I said at the very beginning, we'd much rather see our officers handing out face masks than we would citations. To help in this effort, earlier this week, we had 4,000 masks on hand that we distributed to our police departments, to the precincts, and to the WAC. Yesterday, in anticipation of being where we are, we bought another 10,000 masks, which may be here today. So there will be an abundance of masks available. Our policemen will have them, our police officers will have them, and they'll be available at the precincts. For those who find themselves without a mask and that cannot social distance, our officers will have a mask and ask you, you know, to comply with the law. We look forward to working with everybody in the community to make this work, and I really believe that we can make it work. I hope that you felt the spirit of what the city councils were saying here. I don't think that you've found a spirit of being heavy-handed and just because I can tell you so, why we're making you do this. There's genuine concern that this is an opportunity. We know we're taking a risk doing this. We know that we've maybe offended some people in doing this. But at the end of the 30 days, we'll both know whether it was the right thing to do. And, you know, some people say, "Well, we told you so." I'm not going to tell anybody, "We told you so," because at the end of the day, what we want is to make sure that our businesses stay open and that our citizens stay healthy. So let's work together to make this happen. And this is, there are a lot of questions about this, like, can I wear, do I have to wear a mask here, or do I have to wear a mask there? So we are developing a series of frequently asked questions, and probably, we're shooting for noon tomorrow to be able to give that to the media. It will be on our website to help clear up any questions that people may have. And the reason we can't hand you those frequently asked, the answers to those frequently asked questions right now, is that I think it's important for the council, with the city council, to look at them and make sure that we are in sync with how we've interpreted what the ordinance says. So again, thank you very much for everybody's patience and for your input.
Mr. President.
Ms. Rich?
Ms. Simpson, if you're going to send any information to the media, can you copy us so we can upload it on our page?
So the only questions that we may answer today of the frequently asked questions will be four or five, and they'll be very simple, we'd be glad to do that. But there's a series of about another 20 questions that we want input from the council, really from the legal part, to make sure that we're in sync. You will get that just prior to sending it to the media. And we hope that's by noon tomorrow.
All right. Sounds good. What's your opinion?
Probably move to second. Any discussion? Any no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move to adjourn.
Ha Hitler!
Good grace of life! Ha Hitler! Ha Hitler! Good God almighty! Hitler! Good grace of life! I don't think not a word in...
Yeah. Wait a minute. Give me a few minutes. Everybody is up. Yeah.